I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry that was a little more than a five-minute break, but it had to fill the galleries. The first item on the agenda is comments by the mayor, and I'm going to shift the sequence around a little bit here because of the large group we have, and I'm going to move directly to what was supposed to be our fifth item, which is the Lake Forest Fire Department Clinical Save Awards. Tonight, we're honoring rescue efforts by the Lake Forest Fire Department, Lake Forest Police Department, Dispatch, and the Chicago Bears staff. Over the last few months, Lake Forest first responders have done three clinical cardiac saves. These saves were on calls where the patient was in full cardiac arrest and considered deceased. Through the heroic efforts of the people involved, three different patients were able to regain a heart rate, were taken to Lake Forest Hospital for further care, and eventually were released to return home safely to their families. I'm happy to introduce Battalion Chief Andrew Rick and Dr. Michael Peters from Lake Forest Hospital, who will present the save awards. And then we're going to have a lot of pictures.
A lot of pictures, a lot of pictures. Dr. Peters, coming. Honorable Mayor, members of council, thank you, obviously, with a number of people especially. Thanks for having us come and letting us do this tonight. It's a really good opportunity to look at a lot of segments of our public safety. We have the police, the fire, our dispatch center, and then even the community members that were involved as well. We do work closely with all those other departments, and none of us do any of these things for the awards or the recognitions. I think this is something we just enjoy our job. We like doing what we do. But this is a really cool opportunity to find a few of those moments when we really make a true difference in someone's life, and that there's an opportunity for somebody that wasn't going to go home unless there was some intervention, and we've sent those people back to their families. A really cool opportunity tonight that two of those people, two of the three that we actually had to save for, have shown up tonight, and an opportunity to shake some hands with some of the people that were involved. I think that, to me, is more meaningful than the award that's involved. It's the opportunity to say hello to that person, shake a hand, and talk a little about who they are, and get to know them a little bit more. So, as we mentioned, we've had a number of saves over the last six months, but we are at a 55% save rate right now for the last six months, which is far and above anything that any of us truly expect. The national average is only about 5% right now. Part of that deals with a lot of, you know, good work that we've been doing, a lot of good training that we've been doing, but it also, it's all those other components that are involved in making sure that the perfect process is set in place so that those people have a good chance to survive. The awards presented tonight are from our cardiac monitor manufacturer, Zoll Medical, and the American Heart Association. And assistant presenting the awards, I'd like to invite Dr. Michael Peters. He's the Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital Region 10 EMS Director. So he is in charge of all of the EMS in our system right now and is, you know, directly responsible for a lot of the things that we are doing in the field, and appreciate you being here to help us out with this tonight.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, thank you. We appreciate this opportunity. Again, I'm EMS Medical Director at Northwestern Lake Forest. I'm also an emergency physician. Here with me today is Sarah Bond. She's our lead instructor for the paramedic training, and somewhere Everett Garretson, who is our EMS coordinator. So we're describing events here that are truly lifesaving. You heard the rates for recovery from resuscitation of cardiac arrest being around 5% nationally, and the rates for the firefighter paramedics in the city of Lake Forest are much higher. And these three resuscitations to complete recovery really demonstrate, I think, the commitment, the high quality, the education that is demonstrated by our Lake Forest firefighter paramedics. And I also, you know, also at the same time wish to acknowledge the important role of Dispatch and your law enforcement from the city of Lake Forest, and of course, the resuscitation at the Bears facility, you know, the top-notch work of their security people. So what I thought we would do is, as I read each of these, the description of each of these cases, whoever was involved in the specific case, maybe you could come up and stand here?
Yeah, we'll get it.
Okay. So the...
Yes, can, actually, can I just...
We can, yeah. Yeah, why don't we, if you guys were involved in the first, obviously, if you need to, why don't you guys kind of... Mr. Arkush, would you like to join, please?
Yes. Lake Forest Fire Department was dispatched for a 69-year-old male in cardiac arrest. When the six firefighter paramedics from Lake Forest arrived on scene, bystanders were already performing CPR, and had used a community AED to perform cardiac defibrillation. The fire crews took over the resuscitation. They work in a pre-established role. Each person has a defined role, and they work together as a team to provide, you know, the best chance for recovery. They immediately performed high-quality, uninterrupted chest compressions, which are a key component to resuscitation success. They instituted airway management, and they administered lifesaving medication. Their patient regained his heartbeat, and he was safely transported to Northwestern Medicine Lake Forest. Upon arrival, he was breathing on his own. The emergency department continued care, and he was eventually discharged.
Good. We can do photos, yeah. Yeah, you guys ready? We can switch out. Some of you'll end up back up.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Do what?
Sorry?
Keep standing.
Hold one.
Stand up for a photo.
All right, next one.
So everyone involved in November 29th, 2022, if you'd have you please come up. Oh, I'm sorry, 10:15, 2022. Yep, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Fire, prescribe that. Somebody hold that. Yep, that gentleman there, yep. This is the October one. This is you guys, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, the second patient, this event occurred on the early afternoon of October 15th, 2022, when a 39-year-old father collapsed in his driveway, which was witnessed by his son. He called 911, and the dispatchers instructed the man's son on how to perform CPR on his father. Lake Forest Police Officers quickly arrived on the scene and took over CPR from the patient's son, and then six Lake Forest firefighter paramedics arrived soon after, again, each performing a specific role to continue the resuscitation. After several cardiac defibrillations, doses of medication, the patient regained his heartbeat, and he was transported to Lake Forest and was later discharged. By himself?
That's all those guys do here. And hand that to John up there, to John for dispatch.
Same dispatcher?
Three of them are the same, yeah, yeah.
The third event occurred on, again, in the early afternoon on November 29th, 2022. Lake Forest Fire Department was dispatched for a 60-year-old female who had fallen on her driveway. While they were responding to the call en route, the firefighter paramedics were notified that the patient was possibly in cardiac arrest, and that dispatchers were instructing the neighbors to start CPR. Upon arrival, Lake Forest Fire Department paramedics took over CPR from the neighbors, continued high-quality, uninterrupted chest compressions, performed cardiac defibrillation, airway management, and administration of medications. After 15 minutes, paramedics regained a heartbeat on their patient and safely transported her to Lake Forest Hospital, where she was later discharged.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor. Again, we appreciate you guys having us here. I know it was a lot of people, so we'll quiet down and we'll get out.
I'll take a very short break here and allow people to depart if they would like.
Well, that was heartwarming.
Yeah.
How wonderful.
That's impressive.
Especially after that football player. They were in the neighborhood twice yesterday then, because my mother-in-law was taken in yesterday, too.
Yeah, for like the fourth time.
She okay? She's home, yeah, she came home just before I left. Ooh. Conclude what? Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, right, 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 right. They need to, they're, you know, they're building a whole new one. They're completely, they're completely going to replace it. Nope, nope, it's, nope. Mondays are busy, too, I think.
Well, it's great to hear of the real, the really important work that gets done around here. So it's quite a testament to the quality of our staff up and down the line. Next items are comments by the mayor. There are, we have a couple of folks who left us recently who have made great contributions to the community over the years. On December 4th, 2022, Thomas Hunter III, who attended elementary school at what is now Gordon Community Center, and in the sixth grade met his future wife, Maxine Morrison. They went on to have two sons and five grandchildren and five great-grandchildren. Thomas created the Hunter Family Foundation that has committed to community-based initiatives that will improve lives in a long-term and sustainable way by supporting education, healthcare, economic development, and the environment. It's the foundation's belief that families should have equitable opportunities to learn, play, and grow in the communities they call home. One of Tom's favorite volunteer organizations was the Lake Forest Garden Club. He was an honorary member and the only man invited to belong to this all-women's club. A memorial service is planned for May, and as you go around town, you'll see evidence in many places of the commitment that the Hunter family has made to this community over, over the years. So we, we will miss, we will miss Tom. And we also lost one of our consummate volunteers on December 27th, 2022, Audrey Semelman, who had lived in Lake Forest for an entire life, attended Lake Forest Schools, where she met her husband Andy, and they raised their family, a daughter and two sons, who have also remained in the area. One of Audrey's passions was Lake Forest Day, and she worked on Lake Forest Day, the celebration of the 150th anniversary of Lake Forest founding, and the centennial celebration of Lake Forest Day, which resulted in creation of the Lake Forest Day Foundation, which is a $1 million, was started with a $1 million private contribution, or a series of private contributions, to endow all future Lake Forest Days. So Audrey was a role model of the qualities that make Lake Forest special in her volunteerism and love of community, and a celebration of Audrey and her life is being planned for And then the next item on the agenda is a resolution of sympathy for former alderman David Kane. Let me read the resolution. If I can find it here, okay. Where did that go? Oh, here we go. Whereas on behalf of the city of Lake Forest, the city council expresses its profound sadness at the loss of Milburn David Kane Sr. at the age of 85 on December 14th, 2022. Whereas David served as second ward alderman from 1986 to 1991, and in that role dedicated time, energy, and passion to serving his constituents and the entire Lake Forest community. And whereas David Kane leaves a lasting legacy in our community, and will long be remembered for his commitment and contributions to Lake Forest, and more importantly, he'll be remembered as a friend. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Lake Forest, in session on January 17th, 2023, hereby expresses its deep regret and sincere sympathy to the members of the Kane family. Be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to the Kane family with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the January 17th, 2023 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion is, the resolution is approved. And again, we will, we will miss David's influence. It went well beyond his time as an alderman. His, his firm was the auditor for several city foundations and institutions, and, and he had a distinguished career in, in accounting. So again, we will miss, we'll miss David. Next, we have a resolution of appreciation for retiring employee Crispin P. Abel. I'll read the resolution. Whereas Crispin P. Abel has been a dedicated employee of the city of Lake Forest since March 15th, 1988, and whereas Pete Abel began his career in the city of Lake Forest as a maintenance worker, too, and whereas Pete Abel has used his 35 years of experience and knowledge in the water and sewer fields to educate and train his coworkers, and whereas Pete Abel has been relied on for all facets of the department and has been lead operator for water metering and utility locating, and whereas Pete Abel has been a mainline driver for snow operations and has on numerous occasions assisted in other areas when called upon, and whereas Pete Abel has been a dependable and dedicated employee who took pride in the services he provided, and whereas Pete Abel honorably retired from the city on December 16th, 2022, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Pete Abel for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to Pete with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the January 17th, 2023 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion is approved. And I have photo op. Whereas Charles R. Franco has been a dedicated employee of the city of Lake Forest since July 30th, 2000, 2001, and whereas Charles R. Franco began his career with the city as a seasonal maintenance worker and within a few months was promoted to maintenance worker, too, and whereas Charles R. Franco was instrumental in the training and mentoring of his peers over his 21 years of service to the city, and whereas Charles R. Franco has been a true professional who served the families with great dignity and compassion, whereas Charles R. Franco was a reliable and devoted employee who took great pride and care in the services he provided to the residents during some of the most difficult times of their lives, and whereas Charles R. Franco was a friend to all those who visited the cemetery and leaves a lasting legacy to the families, visitors, vendors, and friends of the Lake Forest Cemetery. Whereas Charles R. Franco honorably retired from the city on December 16th, 2022, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Charles R. Franco for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to Charlie with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the January 17th, 2023 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Do I have a motion to approve? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. to some local citizens that we'll all recognize. Whereas the area of and surrounding Lake Forest played a significant historical role in trade between Native American tribes up until the late 18th century, and whereas the Potawatomi were the last of many Native American tribes to inhabit, inhabit our local area, and whereas Green Bay Road, Milwaukee Avenue, and other area roads are built on what were originally Potawatomi paths, and whereas the city of Lake Forest recognizes and respects the culture and contributions to our community of Native Americans past and present, and whereas we express our appreciation for Native American tribes dating back thousands of years before us for protecting and caring for our local land, and whereas the Lake Forest community is uniquely situated on the shores of Lake Michigan, connecting us directly to land and water, and calling upon us as, as modern-day stewards of these invaluable natural resources. Whereas in recognition of our community's deep-rooted connection to Native American culture and our important role as a current-day conservation community, the Lake Forest Open Lands Association and the History Center of Lake Forest Lake Bluff are proudly partnering to produce a year-long series of programming called Native Voices, a Lake Forest celebration of Native American life, past, present, past and present. And whereas the year-long Native Voices Project will offer events, lectures, and films throughout Lake Forest showcasing our history and the vibrancy of the Native American culture, and whereas we offer appreciation to the Mitchell Museum of the American Indian and the Trickster Cultural Center for their collaboration in selecting the individuals featured in Native Voices programming, and whereas the city of Lake Forest offers its deep gratitude to Native American tribes who came before us for their steadfast stewardship of the land we now call home. Now therefore, I, George Pandeleon, Mayor of the city of Lake Forest, on behalf of the city of Lake Forest, acknowledges the Native Voices Initiative as a welcome year-long celebration of Native American life, past and present, and sincerely thank all who have been involved in, in its organization and planning. In witness hereof, I have hereunder set my hand and have had the seal of the city of Lake Forest to fix this 17th day of 2023. We don't have to take action on this, but I will present the resolution to the, to our neighbors here. Actually, I noticed today, as I was going through some materials, that the programming is already beginning at the History Center. I think they've got their first event next week sometime, so, and it sounds very interesting. It's about, it's about Native American trail markers, and I guess they would do things with trees to, to identify trails that were very, if you, if you walked by one today, you would never notice it, but, but if you know what you're looking for, it's all over the place, so, sort of interesting. I think at that, at this point, I will take another short break. If anybody would like to go back to their homes and families, they're welcome to do that. We've got a lengthy agenda tonight following. We're certainly welcome to stay, but if you would prefer to go celebrate, or what have you.
She's working on stuff for open, I think she's doing some marketing work for them, yeah.
Okay, well, that actually concludes the mayor's comments for the night, so.
Good job.
I'm going to turn it over to the city manager for comments from the city manager, report from the city manager.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. Mayor, I think you earned your $10 for the year this evening. I'll let you rest your voice for a few minutes. I have one item under my report this evening, and that is pertaining to potential athletic field improvements at Deer Path Park. I've asked several members of staff to provide a presentation tonight on final recommendations that were made by the Athletic Fields Advisory Group pertaining to turf field material selection and some changes that were made to the overall site plan for the property. The advisory group's most recent work came on the heels of direction that had been provided by the city council back in September to evaluate playing surface materials through the lens of five different criteria and sta- the lens of five different criteria, and staff's gonna walk through that process a bit tonight. I do want to take the opportunity to just note, we have several members of the advisory group who are here with us tonight, and I want to commend the work that, that they did. I think the final project, when presented to the council, is something not only that the entire community can be proud of, but I think will really serve as a model for the rest of the region and other units of government throughout the country. And I think also is a wonderful example of how large scale capital improvement projects can be done in Lake Forest so successfully relying on volunteers, working with city staff, and following the, the leadership of our elected officials to, to ultimately come up with a final product. So I want to just again, take the opportunity to thank all of the members of the advisory group who were willing to devote their time to, to get us to where we are this evening. Real quick, before I turn it over to staff, I did want to just provide a high level timeline for this project and how we foresee it moving forward over the next month to six weeks. As noted, tonight's discussion is really centered around playing surface materials with a little bit of discussion about the overall site plan. In a few weeks, at the February 6th City Council meeting, staff will provide another presentation, this time to review programming impacts at Deer Path Park and other parks within our recreation portfolio. And then importantly, to seek council direction on priorities when considering potential changes to our field rental fee structure. And then on February 21st, a little over a month from now, we'll begin capital financing discussions specific to the project. And I'm really pleased to say that all of the design work for this project is now complete and was done in accordance with direction that we had received from the City Council. And the project itself was just put out to bid, so we'll allow that process to play out, and then we'll, again, in late February, start reviewing those competitive bids and pricing with the City Council. But I hope that, again, provides some context for what's to come over the next few meetings. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent of Parks and Forestry Chuck Myers.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the Council. Last time that we presented on this project, we, we discussed, when we discussed this project, we talked about the recommendations from the City Count, City Managers Advisory Group. Those recommendations included direction for us to finalize field design based on the 9.5 acre configuration, and then to select turf fields based, or turf field materials based on the criteria that City Manager Wishe mentioned. We're gonna be spending a fair amount of time on that tonight. And then finally, to continue with the development of the conceptual master, vision plan. So with that, tonight, we're here to continue that discussion. And again, City Manager just mentioned the upcoming things, but just to give you a couple high level things that we've accomplished in the last few months. Lots of design, obviously, working with our team and the consulting team. The advisory group did meet one more time back in November, and that was the fourth meeting that we met with them. Again, they focused on the criteria for the turf material selection. So again, we're at 100% right now. We're gonna take a deep dive into the criteria in a few minutes. So with that, tonight, we are going to review the recommendations. I'm gonna start by talking about the updated conceptual vision plan, and then we're gonna take a deeper look into the evaluation of turf materials. So this is the, as you may recall, the advisory group was originally tasked with looking at a larger area than this. It included some of the areas around the school for this conceptual plan. However, at this time, we were at, we were directed to focus on what you're seeing tonight. So this is the project that we are going forward with, and we're gonna be spending a lot of time on in the next few meetings. So a few items to highlight, I'm just gonna talk about the updates since you've last seen this. But during the design process, we shifted the fields further to the east, and that was in order to accommodate stormwater detention on the west end and to mitigate some of the cost, higher cost of mitigation. So that was a major shift to the east. We talked a little bit about that. As design proceeded, became very apparent that that was going to be the best way to go. Since the fields were shifted to the east, some of the amenities that were originally proposed on the east end had to be moved. And I'll just remind you that also part of the original recommendation by the advisory group was that this should remain a community park, and as such, it would have features that you typically see there, play structures and things like that. So we thought it was very important to relocate those items. So just to point to the areas, so along the east end, we still have a practice batting cage right here. We have the three fitness stations that are scattered on the walking path. So the letter, or number 12, one here, one here, one there. So that did stay on the east end, but that's all we really had room for. There is a walkway then up to the rec center as well. And then to accommodate the playground, we shifted it up here, letter 11, so it's right at the entrance to the park. And we're working with a company on that design, and you'll see more on that in the future. So then, as I mentioned, the east end, we were able to accommodate more of that detention area. So this area is a large basin that essentially is a rain garden, so it's planted with native plants that are water tolerant. All of this area, again, is an area that is planted with native plants, tree shrubs, perennials, that kind of thing. But there's also the walking path and a small boardwalk that goes into a wet area of the park. So with that, the, the final thing I want to talk to you about, we, we did talk about the buildings last time, came back to you for additional design fund for that, but there are three buildings on the site as designed, one on the north end of the walkway, the corridor that splits the synthetic turf fields. That's the larger bathroom with a pavilion and an area for concessions. On the south end of the walkway is a smaller bathroom facility with also a, a small pavilion so people can get out from the elements. And then up in the corner here is a maintenance shop. The number five is the actual shop, and then a storage yard adjacent to that. So those are the elements that changed as part of the project. You'll also notice that the tennis courts are on there. It wasn't in there last time we were here. This is, the tennis courts are shown where they're at right now. We did look at the useful life of the tennis courts, and it, it definitely needs to be replaced. It's in poor condition right now. And going into the project, we decided that we would go ahead and design it and go out to bid for this and make it part of the construction contract. So you are going to see it going forward. It is not part of the overall cost of the project. It is being funded through a different source, so the Park and Public Land Fund will be funding that. Also, one other thing to note, it, it's essentially in the same footprint, little bit bigger, but not a whole lot, and that's to accommodate, we are now going with four pickleball courts and four tennis courts. So it's gonna look a little different than what you see here. That will be the first designated pickleballs in, in our park system.
Chuck, can you comment on number 20, the Memorial Plaza?
Yeah, there is a, I'm gonna have to ask somebody to tell me the name of Parskey. Parskey. So the Parskey Memorial is there, it was, it is right now down in this area, a little bit south. To accommodate shifting the fields and the path, we did have to move it. So we are going, obviously, we're gonna restore it to the way it is now and do new plantings and everything to make it, we're gonna honor the, the spot for sure.
Maybe in future materials are offline, could you share some history with us about that? I'm not familiar with that.
I don't have the full history. I know there's people in the room that do.
Offline.
Oh, offline, I'm sorry.
Offline is fine, not on the spot.
Yeah, absolutely.
But just be great to have it as just a back, just curious.
Yes, absolutely. There are a few other memorials on the site, and we are locating plaques and things like that to accommodate that. So throughout the process, this whole project, there has been a team of staff members from various different departments, different backgrounds, that have been working behind the scenes with our large team of consultants. Really impressed, impressed by the effort that this group has made. I can assure you that a lot of people that are very committed to making this an outstanding facility. So with that, we've asked two members of that team to join us tonight to talk about the criteria. So I'll invite up Jim Lockfair, he is the Assistant to the Public Works Director, and Cory Weirma, he is the City Forester.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, and thank you Chuck for your presentation. I'm gonna run through the first few slides on the turf materials, and then I'll quickly turn it over to Cory here to, to finish up. But really, just before we, we dive in, Cory and I are, are very excited to be here this evening to talk about the turf material evaluation process, and really, it, it was the advisory group's evaluation process, looking at a number of different turf products, and that, that number was really quite impressive. The advisory group truly did look at everything in a great amount of detail. The intent this evening isn't to get quite into the weeds that the advisory group did. Instead, talk more about the process, provide that, that high level overview of where they ultimately narrowed down the product selection for their recommended turf system this evening. And, and with that, the advisory group, just at the top of the slide there, really started talking about products at their third meeting that occurred in early August. I think we shared maybe a little bit of an overwhelming amount of products at, at that meeting with 10 infill options, three different shock pads, two turf types. But really, it was that meeting where the advisory group formed their recommended criteria to further analyze the various turf products. As City Manager Wishe and Superintendent Myers explained, that occurred at the September 6th meeting, and that was incredibly helpful to take the next step at the fourth advisory group meeting, where utilizing that criteria, there was an evaluation of three systems and where the advisory group landed ultimately on the screen there, if you see the chart, was with that first overall system, with, with the turf product being recommended as iron turf. The infill is recommended to be used, that, that's recommended to be used as brock fill, which is an organic wood product, and then the shock pad is a brock YSR shock pad. And Cory and I know that throughout our presentation, we're gonna be referencing the various components that I just mentioned quite a bit, and so we thought that pulling up this image to, to clearly define what exactly they are would be helpful. And with that too, I'm gonna invite Cory up right now to share the advisory group's recommended product, products, where they actually landed, so that council, you can feel, see, touch what is actually being recommended. And going back to the slide, just, just starting with truly the top going down of the turf system, you start with the turf. And the turf itself are, as you see at the top of the screen, those, those green fibers. Just below that, within the turf, is the infill. And real quick, taking a step back, the turf that's being recommended, again, that's in front of you, is iron turf. The infill, which sits within the turf, what's being recommended by the advisory group is brock fill, which again is that organic wood product that you should be able to pass around and feel. The layer that sits between the turf and the infill and the stone base is a key one, it is that shock pad, and we'll, we'll get into quite a bit, bit of detail on that when we talk player safety. And then lastly, you have the stone base at the bottom, which is truly, regardless of the turf system, really a standard component of any turf system. It's not necessarily unique, the stone base is the stone base.
Jim, I'm glad you interrupted.
Yeah.
With the infill, is that in this?
It is not. It is in a separate yard that should make its way around. Yep, no problem. Going back to the evaluation criteria, and again, City Manager Wishe and Superintendent Myers already highlighted that a little bit, but it, just to recall, going back to that September 6th City Council meeting, the evaluation criteria that's before you on the screen is ultimately what the advisory group recommended, to really pare down the many different turf products that are out there to say, these are the important things for us, that, that we want to see any turf system meet. And Cory and I will soon, we, we have a slide dedicated to each one of these criteria. We, we will clearly define each one individually, as well as provide some context on why these products fit that criteria. Lastly, just on this slide, important to point out, beyond the criteria, there was a tremendous amount of detailed product analysis that involved a lot of staff and advisory group research. Staff visited 20 plus fields to experience and, and feel these products in person, had actually completed projects. We, we had the, the pleasure of actually meeting with field maintenance staff that maintained it, as well as people that programmed it, players, coaches. It was great, and just to quickly reference the picture on the right hand side of the screen, that's one of our field visits. You can see Cory and myself, we were actually, that visit involved a product vendor where we were doing some safety data testing. On the far right of, of the screen, that gentleman's holding a special safety test instrument where we were actually getting live data on site, so those, those field visits were, were great. Seminars to learn about products as well as maintenance, and then lastly, vendor meetings, where truly bringing in a number of vendors to the Municipal Services Building to show off these products, and they, they brought in an incredible amount of samples, staff was able to ask a number of questions, and if anyone has swung by Superintendent Myers' office the last couple of months, it continued to grow and expand the, the number of samples, and I think it even became challenging to walk through a little bit, but it, it was quite impressive. Those, those vendor meetings were very key. Moving on to the evaluation criteria, the, the first criteria we wanted to talk through was that player safety, and each of the five criteria are incredibly important, but player safety does throughout the evaluation process through staff and with the advisory group, it was really one that rose to the top. Obviously, we want to ensure any product that's being utilized with this potential project, we know that there's gonna be young athletes at Deer Path Park, safety is of the utmost importance. And so with, with player safety, there's two key industry standard measures that really dictate the overall safety aspect of a field, and those measures are, one, a Gmax test, which is all about lower body injuries, and that Gmax test, the, the instrument that is actually used, it's, it's the first picture, the, the one that's situated a little higher up to the left. The goal is, and I shouldn't say the goal, the, it's the benchmark, scores have to be between a range of 70 and 100. The second measure that is used is what's called HIC testing, which is all about head injuries. That instrument is just to the right, a little bit lower there. The key benchmark score to hit there to ensure that a field is safe is below 1,000. And what we learned from really the very start of the process, and for me, it actually, I, I learned it at our first advisory group meeting, was that the shock pad is what plays the ultimate key role in maintaining those scores consistently. What was, what I felt was very unique about our advisory group process, just one of the many aspects, and City Manager Wishe reviewed quite a few, we had the pleasure, and again, very unique, experience of having a heads ground, heads, head groundskeeper of an NFL team, the Chicago Bears, serve. heads, head groundskeeper of an NFL team, the Chicago Bears, serve on that group. And immediately, one of the comments that he made, again, at that first meeting that really resonated with all of us is shock pad is key. Whatever you, we move forward with, you need to have a shock pad to ensure and maintain that player safety. And so with that, the, the, uh, the Brock shock pad is recommended. It's really an industry-leading shock pad. There are some other benefits and one of the other criteria is, I know Corey's going to reference later on, but for safety, the Brock shock pad for us was key. Before I move on from this slide, I did want to just quickly highlight, uh, the NFL. Throughout this project design, really it, it's been this NFL season where there's been a lot of media attention on turf fields at, at their level and a lot of players recently coming out, uh, essentially opposing those systems. Our staff team has been really following those articles and, and that news closely. And as we continue to look at that, one key thing that, that was a difference between our project and the NFL, and it's almost sounds self-explanatory, but we're, we're talking, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. The NFL, one, it, you, two different player types versus our community park. Uh, that, that, the usage and how those players play is very different. And then ultimately, it's worth noting as well that the three products that were, that the advisory group has recommended are, are not products that are being used by the NFL. The NFL stadiums typically you're, you're utilizing crumb rubber, a very specific turf type. And again, those aren't, those weren't products that were recommended by the advisory group, the ones that are before you this evening. Moving on to the second criteria, play, playability. Playability was evaluated through, again, research, reference checks, having those onsite field meetings with, with staff of other similar community fields. Again, we want to be consistent, talking to people with fields that are, will be similar to us, that feature multi-sports. Key aspects of playability that, that we use were really impact, which is safety, and I just reviewed that. Field temperature i- is a key one and heat, I'm going to circle back to that one. Traction, how your footing is maintained on the field. A field that's too slicked, where, where athletes are falling isn't a good thing. A field that's too firm, where cleats are locking into that surface, also not a good thing in terms of lower extremity injuries. And then lastly, that multi-sport use. There are so many products out there that are specific to a specific sport where it's accommodating football. It's accommodating baseball. We know at Deer Path Park, it's going to be multi-sport, so finding products that fit that were very, very important. Going back to the heat, uh, and this, really I want to highlight the, the Brock fill, uh, that, that wood organic product that's in front of you. That, that was a product that is really an industry-leading product in terms of maintaining those lower field temperatures. And the examples we heard, July, August, those extremely hot 90-degree days, sun's beating down on, on the field. There's a lot of products out there where those field temperatures approach dangerous conditions and staff has to shut down the field, that they become unplayable. And so Brock fill, again, industry-leading, they're seeing a 40 to 45 temperature degree difference between some of those other products. That was a key thing for staff as well as the advisory group in, in recommending that. And then just lastly with playability, the recommended system by the advisory group really does have a significant amount of positive and successful playability accounts from coaches and players to us, the, and the advisory group. Those, those were key things. Uh, these are products that are installed in hundreds of fields across the US internationally. They're, they're proven with those successful playability accounts. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Corey.
Jim, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Quickly, with in term, in reference to the heat index?
Yeah.
And the safety, are they saying some of that decrease in temperature is due to the fact that the, the organic wood component is water-absorbent?
You.
So that when you're spraying those fields down, it's actually holding in moisture, keeping it cool?
Yeah, and spraying the fields down, Corey is actually going to review maintenance. Another benefit is this is a product that doesn't need to be irrigated. Through just natural storm and rainwater, it'll eventually hold that moisture and it holds it for a long time. Where from a playability standpoint, it's not like the players are getting wet from it, but it holds that moisture where you're spot on, Alderman weather.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council. Our third evaluating criteria tonight is maintenance. Uh, we, uh, to ensure a high level of playability and to extend the life of the turf system, uh, maintenance is very important. Each turf system that we've researched has a specific manufacturer's maintenance recommendation. Uh, the key considerations you see listed, uh, playing an important role in our evaluation process. With regards to the turf, maintaining appropriate pile direction is very important, meaning the way that the turf fiber, fibers stand up or lay down can have an impact on playability. We fell in love with iron turf because those fibers stand straight up, which really creates that true natural grass feeling. With regards to the infill, maintaining proper infill density is a key component in safety and playability. Some infill, infills can migrate more often than others and, and some do, some do require irrigation, which does require more maintenance. Our preferred product Brock fill does not require irrigation, has been shown to stay in place during play. The shock pad, there really is no maintenance concerns with the shock pad. We just really wanted to highlight the 25-year warranty. Proper maintenance will extend the life of the turf. Our, our park section has been heavily involved in maintenance discussions, uh, on the recommended system and is confident that all maintenance needs and frequencies will be met. Our fourth criteria is durability. We've evaluated durability, utilizing product warranties, estimated useful end-of-life, industry-standard testing and anticipated fiber loss. We recommend systems that we are talking about tonight all have warranties that are higher, are on the higher end of, uh, the industry. Uh, some of these products that we've researched did not have warranties at all or had warranties that, uh, for lesser years. As you can see, the iron turf is warranty, does have a 10-year warranty. The Brock fill does have a 10-year warranty. And then we spoke about the, the shock pad already, already being at 25 years. Uh, Lisport testing, yeah, is a turf, uh, industry, uh, standard, uh, testing for assessing performance and durability. Uh, you can see the picture to the right is the machine, um, that is designed to simulate wear on the turf. Uh, iron turf reached 300,000 cycles, uh, before, uh, during the test, which makes it, uh, ranked the highest of all artificial turfs on the market. Uh, lastly, antest- anticipated fiber loss, uh, is an important characteristic that we wanted to be aware of. Controlling turf product fiber loss in the industry has come a long way. There are two types of turf products, there's a woven and a tufted. Uh, iron turf is a woven. Woven versus tufted, tufted products are directly related to how the turf fibers are held in place. Iron turf is one of the few woven products on the market that will keep fibers in place and reduce fiber loss. Our fifth and last, uh, evaluation criteria is environmental sensitivity. Environmental sensitivity has been an important driving factor in our product selection. We feel strongly that the products you see tonight reflect that research. Environmental sensitivity is evaluated by utilizing end-of-life cycle path, material composition and impacts to the natural environment. The Brock YSR shock pad that you see is Cradle to Cradle certified. Uh, Cradle to Cradle certified can be defined as something that is reprocessed to create the same product while maintaining the same performance, meaning that after the 25 years, the lifespan of the Brock shock pad will be returned to the manufacturer and it would be reprocessed into another shock pad. With regards to the infill, uh, many infill products we evaluated were synthetic. Um, there were a number of organic infills that we researched, but most require significant maintenance, like irrigation. Brock fill is organic and is created from Lob Lolly pine. Uh, that's a type of tree that is widely distributed or widely native to the southern and southeastern parts of the United States. And it is widely used in the manufacturing industry. Brock fill does go through a patent process, uh, to develop its final project, uh, product. Brock fill can be composted at the end of its life. Uh, it's a product that will decompose when it's not in its maintained controlled environment. Uh, staff will work with Brock fill, uh, to determine the best options for composting when the time arrives. Iron turf is the only, the fully recyclable turf product on the market. The, the turf industry is making great strides as it, um, as a turf product recycling has become a top priority. Uh, the number of product, uh, recycling facilities continues to increase throughout the United States. And finally, uh, the last thing on this slide is, uh, fiber loss, protection from fiber loss. With the Skokie River immediately adjacent to the fields, it was important for us to be sensitive in selecting a product that would keep fibers in place. Uh, iron turf's woven manufactured products, uh, process offers the best protection for fiber loss and shedding. Other general considerations, uh, before, um, considering, uh, evaluation criteria, staff researched other factors that we felt were important in selecting the turf system. The first being the number of fields, uh, done by a particular company. We were not particularly interested in using products that were not proven. Uh, the second, local presence of companies and maintenance service. If there was an issue or a question, uh, to be, that needed to be addressed, we, we have high, we wanted to have higher confidence in the company with local closer presence. Uh, and we're confident that the companies presented tonight will meet our expectations. Third, just reference text and overall customer service experiences. And then the fourth being staff visits, which Jim mentioned already, you know, we had over 20 visits to other complexes and facilities, uh, so we really wanted to do our homework on that. So with that being said, uh, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over, back over to Chuck for the rest of the presentation.
Uh, so considering the criteria and the extensive evaluation process, the advisory group recommendation is for a system that uses the Greenfields iron turf for the turf pile, the Brock natural infill, also called Brock fill for the infill, and then Brock YSR shock pad for the shock pad layer. I'd also want to note that, um, that the advisory group was not constrained by cost on this at all. Um, we didn't get into that. We told them to look at the products based on the criteria. Um, the advisory group also supports the updated, uh, long-range conceptual plan, uh, for the park. With that, we are happy to answer any questions that you might have. Yes.
Alderman Goshgarian.
Chuck, thank you, uh, to you and your team and to the advisory group for the work that you've put in on it. It's, uh, it's doing the city a great service. And thank you for the very thorough presentation. And clearly, you know, the concerns that you've heard from members of our community have been, uh, addressed, at least in my opinion, and being most sensitive to all those concerns, uh, for everybody in the community. And it is a community park. I just have a, just a couple simple questions. The Brock fill and the composting, um, is that something that we do here? I mean, when we take it off, does it go over to our compost center or do they take it to an off-site facility? Understanding that it is biodegradable, um, can we look forward to putting it into our gardens or what do you do with it?
Uh, yeah, typically it, it will go back to a company. They will take it back, so Brock would take the product back. We did look at the idea, because it is just little wood pellets, the idea that we could use it as top dressing. Um, and that is possible. It, it, it is organic, it would be fine, you would never even see it, it would be spread over fields. Um, the only, uh, concern we'd have is when it's removed, would there be, um, any of the fiber in there? Other than that, it could just be put out on the, any field. Um, it could go to the compost center as well. I suspect in 10 years, it would probably go back to the company though. Um, and that is the point when we would be looking at replacing the carpet as well.
All right, awesome. And I have one follow-up question, if I may. Jimmy, when you were talking about, we were talking about category one, you know, safety evaluations and we were talking about the benchmark tests specifically as they related to what I'm assuming is head injuries as well as lower extremity injuries. And you talked about those, those numbers. Who are those numbers set forth by? Are they like?
So I, off the top of my head, I, I can't share the specific organization that sets those. I do know though, that, that there is certainly, and we will get you that information, but there is absolutely some sort of organization out there that is setting those because those, again, are industry standards. We met with 10 different vendors and, on turf and on infill, and they were all referencing those exact ranges.
Awesome.
But I don't know.
And again, thank you to your team and to the advisory committee. I think you've done a wonderful job. Thank you very much.
Alderman Preschle?
Uh, yeah, thank you very much. I have just a couple of questions. Do you guys know how long those, uh, I guess Brock fill and iron turf have been on the market? Just kind of roughly the products, like how, how many years they've been in the market?
Sure. So Brock fill has been on the market since 2017. And one of the very encouraging things that we heard from Brock fill, one, even though they've only been on the market since 2017, they guarantee their product for 10 years with that warranty. So that was important to us. And then two, I believe their total numbers, number of fields is right around 350. Each year, they have exponentially grown with the number of fields. And they're on track for, I think, to break their field number last year. It's, when, when you look at that, those numbers, it's impressive. Iron turf, I believe, has been around a little bit longer. The woven turf process that, that Corey reviewed is more involved. It's, it's, it's much more of a process than that tufted product that's linear. But again, for us, that was, that was important to keep the fibers in place. And just lastly with iron turf, uh, I believe there's, in, in North America, right around 250 field installs. But internationally, specifically Europe and soccer out there, they, they are a very, very popular product, especially with.
And are both the companies privately owned and are they pretty well positioned to, I guess, survive and, and thrive? It sounds like they're growing pretty well. They got kind of just market-leading products, but they're all, in terms of vendor evaluation, there's no concerns around their financial, just wherewithal?
Yes, no, no concerns. Actually, it, with the iron turf specifically, uh, it's so popular that we are, we have made it known that i- if, in fact, the product moves forwards, that potentially we'd be interested in, in moving forward with their product. They explained to us that they're receiving a large amount of orders and to kind of hurry up and get in line is what the, the message was back to us.
Perfect salesman, yeah, I've been there.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Okay, a couple of other questions. So on the, on the player's safety, on the heat, so what's the, oh my gosh, it's so hot, we can't play because someone could get hurt threshold?
That threshold, and I'll ask Corey and Chuck to jump in if they've heard differently, but really it's that above 120-degree mark where that is absolutely, e- even that 120-degree mark, in our opinion, and this will be something I know Sally, Joe and the programming side will ultimately look harder at as part of that programming policy development on site use, but, uh.
The part of that equation though, which I think, and I'm so sorry for interrupting.
Yeah, why are you interrupting me? I'm on a roll.
Sometimes you deserve to be. That's based on radiant external heat of what? So in other words, if it's, if it's 93 degrees outside, you're probably not sending your child out to play anyhow, right? So 93 degrees may present 154.
Right.
On a, on a, uh, uh, the rubber field.
Yeah.
Versus.
I think your charts at 98 degrees was the ambient temperature.
You got it. And with, uh, thank you Alderman notes, and with that, the, it, it's the radiant heat. You're, you're correct Alderman Goshgarian, where it's, for that crumb rubber, the radiant heat was, I believe, 158 degrees on that graphic versus the Brock was. heat was, I believe, 158 degrees on that graphic versus the Brock was 122 or 125. But yes, those are more so policy decisions that I think will be further analyzed and developed. The important thing for the advisor group and for staff was clearly Brock is, the Brockville is one of the industry leaders in maintaining those temperatures.
And I'll just note real quick, when it comes to, you know, the, the heat concerns, we'll have a programmatic discussion at the next council meeting, but there is some significant seasonality to programming and usage of the fields, and summer is not nearly as busy for parks and rec and private leagues as spring and fall are. So just worth noting that as well. It helps limit the number of days where you could run into or experience any issues.
Okay. On the shock pad, it said that it's, it's a 25-year, I guess, warranty, and we're assuming that's the replacement. I'm just kind of curious, because it's so integral to the player's safety, if there's any kind of conversation about it deteriorating in terms of its, you know, efficacy on, you know, head injuries or, or, you know, kind of lower body extremities. And if, you know, financially, there was a business case to say, gosh, you know, if we replaced it 10 years, it, it, it would have meaningful impact to the, you know, kind of player's safety, or 25 years is fine. You know, I think if we think about this as a variable, because it is so important, and the cost will change a little bit, but I'm just kind of curious if it's, you know, on, on day one, it's the same, and on the 25th year, it's the same.
And those were conversations that were had specifically by the staff team, and it might have been something that came up at the advisory group level as well, but those were questions to the vendor. Explain that warranty and what does that mean? And they were adamant that, no, to your point, Alderman Preschle, that you are maintaining that same integrity throughout the entire use of the product, as long as people aren't puncturing through the turf and infill, where they, they expressly said, like, things like those campfire chairs or yard chairs that have the sharp ends, putting that on the turf and then puncturing it through, operating certain equipment that exceeds certain weight capacities, then yes, then the warranty, you could have some concerns there. But if it's truly just athlete play, like it's supposed to be, you maintain that product integrity for those 25 years.
And last question.
Go ahead. One thing to add to that, the product only really deteriorates from sunlight, and obviously this is lower in the system. It should never see sunlight. So it does maintain, it, it won't break down at all.
Okay, thank you. And the last question, I understand that you've elevated the, the playing surface to 500-year flood range, is that right?
That is correct.
So that's kind of like Noah's Ark kind of flood we're talking about?
Yeah, we'll have one next week.
I mean, I don't know, maybe that's a five-year flood.
It's California.
Right, exactly. Yeah, the mudslide, we'll talk about. But, so I'm just kind of curious if we have, I mean, part of the heart of this project, aside from player's safety, is just we have an obligation to, to have, you know, playability on these fields. I mean, we've got all these cancellations, and, and our kids are going down south to, to play and travel, and the parents kind of take them there. But I'm just kind of curious, you know, at the macro level, is if the 30% or 40% cancellation rates are now almost unheard of moving forward, because we've elevated the turf, and if we get a big rain, like July of 2017, you know, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, just what that field will look like, if we have any indication around playability.
Yeah, and, and obviously, as you can imagine, we had our consultants spend a lot of time on this. We wanted to make sure that it would not flood. So we had Hay and Associates on this. They were one of the engineering firms, spent a lot of time on this, determining how much we needed to lift the field. And as you mentioned, it did end up being that we needed to get it out of the 500-year floodplain, which is fairly significant. That does not mean that they're adding, you know, many feet of stone. In some areas, they're adding as much as nine to 12 inches, but it varies throughout the site, which also provides storage compensation. So it, it, I think that by bringing it up into the 500-year floodplain and the things that are being done on the west end, we are assuring that we should not have cancellations there. I, I think it's, we made it very clear, even when the engineers were saying, you don't have to go, you know, there, there's probably a median point, we made it very clear that we did not want to have cancellations. We didn't want to have any kind of flooding out there at all. So we're pretty confident in it, and we're relying, obviously, on engineers that know a whole lot more than us, but we're pretty confident.
All right, thanks.
Other questions? Alderman Notes?
I want to make sure I'm clear, if I am asked that the, sorry, the infill material is truly biodegradable, that, you know, if it were to end up getting washed into the swale or into the creek, that in 20, 30 years, it's going to disintegrate and biodegrade naturally. I mean, is, is that, is that a fair statement for me to represent?
I would say 100%. It, it is biodegradable, and, and you saw the little samples. It is just wood. It's little particles of wood that will, in a natural system, break down. They don't really, you know, over the next 10 years, they don't break down and rot. There is none of that. But when you, if they were to go out into the Skokie, which I just mentioned, we're not planning on that, but yes, it is a wood product that, and as Corey had mentioned and Jim, we spent a lot of time making sure that there would be limited shed of the materials. So we don't expect any of that to go away either. That's why we emphasized keeping the, the turf particles in place, so that those wouldn't migrate either. So, but as far as the Brockville goes, yes, it is completely biodegradable.
Thank you. I think these exhibits you brought are phenomenally helpful, and if there's any thought that could be given to make them available to the public, I don't know where, whether it's at the rec center or somewhere where there are enough interested people that I think want to touch and feel it, just like we've had that opportunity.
Yeah, no, no, I think that's a great suggestion. We can certainly make them available at the rec center. You know, the challenge we talked about is how people can visualize or conceptualize putting these things all together, because you're seeing them independently, but we know, and part of the reason, of course, we're doing, you know, this comprehensive presentation tonight, is that there has been a lot of community interest in the playing materials themselves, and happy to make those available for the general public.
Wonderful presentation. Nice job. Good work.
I actually have a question. These are two different companies?
Brock and Greenfields, yes, those two are.
Okay, and so you have a contract, like a general contractor that, that builds it, or how does that all work?
They, they have, they have a team of installers. So the Brock infill and the shock pad would be installed via a bigger contract with Iron Turf. The company we're actually working with is Midwest Turf. They're somewhat local company in the Midwest. They would be installing everything.
Okay, so they, so they would be a dealer of both of these products?
Yeah, typically in this, the biggest contractor is the mass grading, so that's when we haul soil out and bring in stone. That is all done by a general contractor that does that grading. Then a company will come in through Iron Turf or Midwest, they will come in and install all the turf-related products.
Okay, other questions? Alderman, Rumble?
Yeah, Alderman Notes' comment about the infill, is that infill coated with something? I mean, it seems to me that it, in order to not biodegrade in 10 years, sitting in here, that it would be coated with something.
It is not coated, it is heat-treated, though. So over the years, they, they've actually refined it since the beginning, like Jim mentioned it, 2017, they've actually rounded it more. It's heat-treated, and that, that's the only thing they're doing to it. No chemicals whatsoever.
And again, I want to thank you and your staff for how thorough you've looked into this in your field trips and everything. I think that, that's exceptional. But I do have a couple of other questions. First of all, you know, the fact that this is mesh, I, I have heard anecdotally that mesh can tend to not slip properly, especially when you're wearing cleats, that your foot can tend to get planted in there and not slide, and it can cause some injuries. Did, did you come across that at all?
So that, in terms of playability, that traction that I had briefly mentioned, I know I didn't really go into much detail, but yes, the turf itself, and Corey had mentioned it, is part of the maintenance, the, the turf pile or the fibers. With iron turf being that woven pattern, there is far more of a guarantee that those fibers are going to stay upright. And in terms of playability, upright fibers is maintaining that, that traction. Maintenance is a key part.
I mean, I think there are times when you want it to give, is my point, rather than becoming fixed in the mesh, was what I was hearing.
Oh, and sure, they, they will give, but what's important.
Not just get, like, be able to slide a little bit like you would on nat- natural turf.
Absolutely. And, and they will, sorry, I misunderstood, but absolutely, they, they will give, more so the direction I was going with the pile height, and what really separates iron turf out from a lot of those other tufted products is the bounce back. So they give, but then they prop back up, whereas other products will stay laying down, and then you do have a traction issue, where once they're folded over, that pile integrity makes for a slippery surface, and that's where far more frequent maintenance by our park section comes into play.
For answering my question. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
What I have heard is that if you're running on this stuff, it won't, if you're on natural turf and you slide, you're going to have some give, you know, a couple of inches, so that your foot's not planted there permanently while your body moves forward, or the, or your ankle or your knee moves forward and your foot's here.
Right.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So that, you know, this stuff should, there should be something, somehow it should be able to give a little bit with traction.
Absolutely. And that, again, is the, it's the turf, but also the infill is what gives it that give, where you, you've probably seen it, the splash, which you drag a foot, there's the, the give, you see it pop up, that absolutely exists, but from the Brockville standpoint, as well as Iron Turf, they, they really pride themselves in being very comparable to that natural play surface, and they pride themselves, and we heard it specifically at our field visits, those players and, and coaches that, no, they, this is a system we enjoy playing on because of the traction, that give. Your foot's not locking in, and you're experiencing a lower extremity injury, hopefully.
And this is all, this backing is water-permeable?
It is, correct.
And what's this made of?
The, the fibers themselves?
The grass.
Yeah, that is a plastic material. There's a specific chemical composition, but to avoid getting, it's plastic. It is a plastic material.
And what's the shock pad made of?
It is, it is, the shock pad's made out of expanded polyprop- polypropylene. So 100% recyclable.
So can you answer one of the main questions that I have, is, are, is there PFOS in these materials?
I can take that one. Yes, there is, much like many materials, there, PFOS unfortunately exists in plenty of products. What we rely on, from the city standpoint, when, when talking about PFOS or other chemicals, we lean on and rely on heavily those federal agencies, like the EPA, to set that guidance, set those policies to ensure that these products are safe to use. And again, we, we know Iron Turf specifically is used throughout the country as well as internationally. One important piece to add to, just beyond the EPA, the manufacturer of Iron Turf was, was proud to share with us as part of our research, that they also follow a specific California state standard, as well as numerous European standards, that they feel are far more stringent from the environmental, environmental standpoint than the EPA is. So that, that was from them, and that was encouraging to hear from the staff standpoint.
But do you know that they are revising those standards? And there was an article in the Tribune just today, saying that there is no safe level of PFOS. No safe level of PFOS. So that causes me.
How would it, how would you get it into your system from here?
Water.
From here?
This, this will off-gas as it heats up. As you use it, it will, you know, it will shed PFOS. So.
Off-gassing occurs within the first 12 to 24 hours of production, then off-gassing becomes non-detectable, just to your point. It's a good point that you make, but it doesn't occur after 24 hours.
Well, I would certainly be interested to know that, because, I mean, there's, it gets into the water, it gets into our water systems, it's now being detected in fish in Lake Michigan, and it's an article in the Tribune today. I'll forward it to everybody. So, you know, I don't think we can ignore that. Additionally, has this company been in business long enough to actually have recycled these products somewhere?
You're talking about Iron Turf right now?
Yeah.
Yeah. They don't, they, they have, yes. They've been in Europe for many years, so they've been doing it there. In the U.S.
But have they recycled there, or just been producing?
No, they, they have recycled fields, and you, not, you know, it's not just that you've reached the useful life. Sometimes they've had to recycle them earlier, but particularly in Europe, they've had to reset. Fields have gone through that 10 years, and they've had to be replaced. So yes, to answer your question, they have been recycled.
So how many times do you think they can recycle this?
I don't know how many times. We did, we did ask, believe it or not, we asked our consultant about that. They didn't have, and they, they said multiple times. They didn't really have any data to share with us to say how long. So there are, I think, Corey had mentioned, there are a number of plants that are being built in the U.S., because there are a lot of fields, as you can imagine, over the last 20 years, a lot of fields have gone in over the U.S. So the demand to get recycling has gone way up on this, and many communities are looking at the same questions. How do we get rid of this? So I, I, as I look at the industry, they've responded in a big way.
I know, it's an industry-wide concern, because it's a, it's a community-wide and nationwide concern that we not add more plastic to our environment. So certainly, there's a lot of demand to recycle, you know, these 10 acres of, of plastic. Did you visit a field that was made of exactly these products that you're recommending?
We did, actually. Now, keep in, a lot of the fields we looked at had different components. They may have had that turf with crumb rubber, or they may have had that turf with a different shock pad. But we did visit a field that has that. There's not a lot right in this area, but there are some. There's a brand-new one that just went up in St. Louis that has the identical three that we have. But we, we have looked at a lot of fields, and they have one or more of these components.
But, but to put these three items together in a single field, you didn't visit one of those?
We, the one in, we did, DeForest, Wisconsin, has a field that we visited that had these products, yes.
These exact products? And how long has that one been?
Um, do you recall?
2019?
19, it's a couple of years, yeah.
So we really don't yet know.
Well.
How well, I mean, no one can testify to us as to how well these specific products wear over time.
Well, as I mentioned, though, we looked at different components at different fields. So I, I think we didn't need to look at fields that only had this, these three. I think the shock pad doesn't really fall, we know that the shock pad is going to last a long, long time. That's not really, I, I don't think there's much question on that. So when, when you say put all three together, I think that by looking at a lot of fields, some that have very similar threesome, we're pretty confident that, you know, with the data we received, it's going to last and perform as expected.
And, and I'll just note, too, that one of the reasons the recommendation that's come forward is a bit unique, or is not as prevalent in the marketplace, is because, admittedly, it's, it's much more expensive, and for a lot of units of government. And for a lot of units of government, cost is the primary motivating factor. And looking at installing turf, we feel, we heard very differently from the council, that there were other criteria that were more important than just cost considerations. Not to minimize cost, but that is why you see a recommendation that is not as prevalent in the marketplace as a more generic crumb rubber field. And again, certainly, as we move into discussion of financing this project, the council could entertain options for much cheaper fields. But again, staff move forward based on the direction we heard at the time in September.
Again, I'm done with my questions, but I totally appreciate the job that you people have, that the staff has done in looking into this and trying to make it as environmentally sensitive as one can make these products. And I thank you for that.
Other questions? Alderman, Bushman.
Thank you. Again, my compliments to all the effort you've put into this, the expertise you have, and the presentation you've done. Let me come back to, you're talking about the 10-year warranty, the 25-year warranty, and I think it was somewhat touched upon in your earlier discussions. What does the warranty say? And, you know, as a consumer, we're familiar with the warranties saying it's guaranteed against product defect, and you'll have a time period where, you know, over time, it loses its value. There's also a warranty that goes to performance standards. And in this case, we are talking about a lot of performance standards in terms of the turf pile, the infill, the shock pad. When you talk about the 10-year, 25-year warranties, are we talking about the manufacturer standing behind their product for these performance standards?
Yes, we are. And I think it's pretty clear on the shock pad, we already talked about that. That is protecting us from any defect. And again, as long as you're not leaving it in, you know, in the sun, there's no real concern there. So it is expected to last 25 years. As far as the turf goes, that is a 15-year. And the key to that is what we talked about earlier with the woven. It is protected against wear, and as you mentioned, performance. Typically, on most turfs, tufted turfs in particular, you are going to have more shedding. And shedding leads, you know, if you're losing those fibers, obviously, over time, it could, it could take away from the performance, and it would have to be replaced. So we're confident that because of the woven part, the woven material, it's going to stay in place, and you're not going to have that diminishment on the performance either. The, generally, as we've talked to people, you know, not the people that are selling it, but as we've talked to people about the turf, we think we're going to have at least 10 years. And what we've heard is you may get 13 to 15 years out of this, without any deterioration of performance. So though, and obviously with the wood, the Brockfill, that's just based on, I mean, the product is meant to hold up for at least 10 years. The little wood pellets, there's, you know, it's not going to change a lot for performance, in my opinion, as long as we're adding to it as needed. Obviously, we're hoping we don't lose much.
Yeah, I was going to divert to that point on the infill. That's something that has to be replenished periodically because of deterioration flow, water flow, or things like that.
Yeah, I think the primary areas where we'd be looking at putting it would be, for example, on the baseball diamonds, in certain spots, you all know that they get worn down. That kind of kick out means you'd have to either rake it back in, or you'd have to add a little bit more. And as we said, we're not expecting to lose this to flooding or anything like that. We actually just saw some pictures from two installations in California. One with the materials that, or the infill that we're looking at, and another one with cork. And they were almost side by side in a flooded community, and the Brockville stayed in place. It didn't move. The cork did, and you could see piles of it all over the field. So, yeah, the, we feel that the Brockfield, Brockfill is going to stay in place, but you may have to supplement it. And we're talking, you know, our maintenance staff will rake on a regular basis. That raking redistributes so that you don't have uneven infill.
You'll spread it around in a more uniform way.
We are very committed to maintenance. We think that that is going to be the key to extending the life of all this. And we've been told that by many superintendents.
I'm thinking in terms of if, you know, we're thinking it's going to perform this way, and it doesn't, whether we have a viable manufacturer that we can go to and would stand behind the product. And taking the warranty to the next step, the recyclability, the cradle-to-cradle we talk about, are they guaranteeing that, that it is cradle-to-cradle, that is 100% recyclable? You know, questions are raised, you know, they don't have a manufacturing facility here, or a recycling facility here. I think it was in Holland they have it. But how much comfort do we have with those claims that, you know, the manufacturer's going to stand behind it?
Yeah, we do have a lot of comfort knowing that that will be the case. I think as recycling has, continues to be on the forefront of some of these athletic fields now, I think in 10 years, who's to say where some of that recycling would be? So we are confident at that, that it will be met cradle-to-cradle.
Okay, I have one.
Sure.
One other thing to add to that comment, too, is right now, for those products being recycled in Europe, as well as Corey mentioned, those facilities are coming online in the U.S. here, so we wouldn't have to ship it overseas. They did specifically say their certification chain-of-command documents that the city would receive, committing that it went through that recyclability process. What they exactly look like, can't say, but they did assure us.
I do see that word certification in your presentation, and that's what they're certifying, that it will go through that process.
Correct.
And let me come to a broader question. Again, you certainly have had environmental sensitivity in top of mind in going forward with these different products. Going to change one word, instead of talking about sensitivity, environmental impact. Is there any area or areas, based upon what you know today, or better yet, what may be forthcoming in the future, that could make, you know, an environmental impact issue here? You know, PFAS was raised, it's in the product, you know, whether it stays in the product, whether it ever comes out of the product, and what form, you know, who knows? Or what sort of regulations come out? In all the work you've done, including with the advisory group, you know, are there still concerns that we should be aware of in the environmental impact area that could be, you know, involved here on a could-be basis?
Nothing specifically comes to mind, and I think it's worth noting, and I'll let Chuck answer, or Corey, if they have anything to add. But nothing immediate comes to mind. And an important factor through meeting with these vendors for the products that the advisory group is recommending, these are vendors that take environmental sensitivity and sustainability very, very seriously. We met with 15-plus product vendors, and you quickly tell who is, who has a product that is just checking a box and then moves on, versus who's truly committed to environmental sensitivity. And I would encourage you to go to both, all three product websites, and you can tell that commitment exists. And it's not, here's a product, we're stepping away from it. There's a thorough belief, I think, that if those issues arise, that they're committed to adapting, and that's what I-
Rather than rely upon their website, I'm looking to Jim, Chuck, and Corey as my expertise there.
Yeah, and I don't have much to add to that, other than, I understand the PFAS, that issue, and as you know, there are a lot of different kinds of PFAS. We didn't want to get too far into that world, but our philosophy from when we realized, you know, that was a huge concern for many residents, and likely it is, we took the approach that we're not going to find a prod, any kind of product that is PFAS-free. And what we thought was the best approach was to keep that there, keep the product there. That's why we keep emphasizing that this product, it's called iron turf because it's very tough, it's resilient. It does not come out. You know, we, we think that keeping it in place is the best strategy. That's the only thing I could really add to that. So other than that, as Jim mentioned, other environmental impacts, not that I can think of either.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Randy.
No, I have, it's a separate question, but no, it doesn't-
Why don't you go ahead? No, go ahead.
Please, please, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
I've already asked you.
And then be done. It goes to a subject, and maybe it's directed more to our city manager. A question I've asked for a few months now on the issue of the programming needs for the fields. And we did have reference to a Johnson Consulting report, and we did have that issue. Is that something that you would prefer not getting into the meeting today, but more at the next meeting? Where we stand in reviewing that data of programming demands, needs, designs?
That would certainly be my suggestion. As I noted earlier, it is anticipated for, to be included on your next agenda in the interest of just time, because this is, you know, a topic of enough interest. And obviously, it's been a very fruitful and healthy discussion to date, recognizing that there are other items on the agenda tonight as well. My advice and suggestion is that we hold on programming discussions until the next meeting.
Alderman, Weber.
Thank you. Thanks again for such a thorough presentation to the staff and to the advisory committee. It's really been great. And this question also could be addressed at a future meeting, so please, if that's appropriate. And really, it's my question of the maintenance equipment that's required for the city to invest in so that we can keep a high level. Is that cost included in this project for initial investment? Or is that a separate cost that we're not going to see moving forward? And segue, will we need additional staff to bring on board? Or is our current staff level able to maintain? You know, I know we were mowing, and that was a significant reason why we moved to this. Or one of the reasons is that because the maintenance level on natural turf was so high for staff and equipment?
Mm-hmm, and chemicals.
Thank you, and chemicals.
Yeah. So the first question about the equipment. The rake that you saw in one of the photos, all of that type of equipment, rake, pull behind rake, that is, that is included in the cost of the turf purchase. So Midwest supplies that, that's in all the information we have. So yes, that is. We're not looking at purchasing anything else. We will need to devote utility vehicles and things like that to pull that equipment. But we feel right now that we have sufficient equipment for that. We don't feel that we will need to be offering any staff members for this. Our current maintenance staff is what we're looking at doing this. We will talk about this a little bit more in the future, as city manager mentioned. That is a little bit of the discussion on February 6th.
Right.
And I'll just note, that conversation is not just specific to the potential synthetic turf fields at Deerpath Park, but whether there are some, you know, ancillary benefits in lowering maintenance obligations at some of our other parks. Again, we'll talk about it on February 6th. There's certainly, you know, it's certainly our understanding and expectation that many of our other community parks that currently host competitive athletic activity will continue to be utilized for that. But there are some benefits from this project that we will see at other parks as well, from a maintenance perspective.
And training as well, training from the manufacturer or whomever on proper protocols to do that. So anyway, just things that I'm thinking about to make sure we can address, would be great. Thank you.
More to come.
Yep.
I actually have a couple of questions. This is basically a four-tiered system, and I would expect that there's different levels of risk associated with each level. You know, it sounds like the shock pad is pretty well-protected, assuming that it holds up. The infill seems to be, you know, this is, I mean, seems to be pretty replaceable. Where's the, where, when these systems have failed in the past, is it, is it the actual turf itself that fails? Or is it one of these other components?
Well, like most of our projects that we bring before you, I would say that the key is the base. So that lowest level, the stone, that is a massive part of this project. It is incredibly important to get the base right, just like, like I said, every project you'll ever hear from us. If that is done well, and it is, you know, all of that takes a very long time. That's a big part of the project for the first three months. It's laser-graded, it's very precise. That being done is the key. Failure on other pieces, you're correct, the infill, unless you're in a flood area or things like that, it should stay put. There's not a lot of risk for failure, and the shock pad likewise, I've already talked about that quite a bit. And that one is pretty well-protected. There's really no way to damage that unless somebody puts stakes in your field or something like that. The actual iron turf product, with it not shedding, that's a big part of this, the success of this product. We're not, we're less concerned with this product than we would be with some other ones that we looked at. There are always, you know, failures with things like, you know, if you don't maintain it well, there are things that end up in synthetic turf that you don't want in there. We looked at the discharge of some of these rakes, and it was kind of, a lot of, you know, materials that like gum and things that shouldn't be in there. As long as you're keeping that out, that's why I mentioned earlier, the maintenance is key. We don't, you know, that's a small level of failure, but it's something that we would want to keep up on. Otherwise, I think that risk is reduced if the base is done well. After that, it's, you know, human error, you know, things that could happen on the field, somebody driving on it, things like that. We feel that this one is lower risk than other products.
And I think you mentioned that the turf itself is very well, you know, very well sort of distributed and has been manufactured for a long time, and has hundreds and hundreds of installations around the world. So, I mean, that, when we talk about track records, it seems like that's, that track record of that component seems to be pretty well-established.
Yeah, and we heard repeatedly that iron turf is in a class of its own. There's a whole lot of turfs out there that, they are also improving in quality and less shedding. But anyone we talked to said, oh, iron turf, that is a separate class. And it's mainly because of that woven technology. That's a really big deal. And as city manager Wishah mentioned, the main reason why people don't go with it is, you'll see in a few weeks, it does cost more, no question.
We've got, I noticed we've got a number of members of the advisory committee here, and I'm wondering if you wanted to say anything.
Can I just follow up on an issue real quick?
Sure.
I just want to ask the staff again, going back to this recycling issue. I wonder, you know, there's a difference between reuse and recycling. And do you know which they're talking about with this? Is it truly recycling, or is it reuse?
So with the iron turf specifically, because with the Brockfill, that is compostable, so it will decompose and over time, but the turf itself is truly recyclable. Meaning, Corey had referenced it, that we were careful, and we quickly learned exactly what you said. Are you telling us, are your products really recyclable, or are you just going to keep reusing them? Where the turf, recyclable, the shock pad, that is cradle-to-cradle reuse. So, yeah, that lifecycle, that's the difference between these three products.
So this may turn out to be a plastic bench at some point?
I can't say specifically what product, but some, it will be-
But that would be reused in someone's yard, or in a indoor training facility, or a- But that would be reused in someone's yard or in a indoor training facility or a health club somewhere or something like that.
Correct.
Yeah, I can add a little bit to that. I do know that in, in talking to people about this, one of the key things that they turn a lot of the plastic into are the runner boards, so they make it into these, like, it looks like wood, but it's composite, it looks like a two by four. That is a very common thing that it goes into. The other thing I want to clarify is with the iron turf, the reason why it's different than a lot of the other tufted products as far as recyclability goes, the biggest factor is that the tufted, many of the tufted products cannot be separated in the recycling process. That's really the game changer. This allows a, allows a company to separate it down into separate individual types of plastic. It's not one, these are different polys that are put together for this. The biggest problem with other materials is you can't just melt them down and turn them into something, it doesn't work. They're separate components. This one is different, you can break it down and turn them into something else.
So in 10 years, why does it have to be replaced?
Why does it have to be replaced?
If it's going to stand up so well and not shed, then, then what's, what's happened to it in 10 years?
And we actually hope that it's more than that, you know, but any, anything, you're going to have some deterioration over the years. So after 15 years, and I, I know, they, that, we did work, we went to a, a field that was a little bit older to look at it, I don't know if you want to speak to that, but in Rockford, there's an older iron turf. And we saw that, it looked like it was holding up very well, but at some time in, in the life of this product, you will have some deterioration.
It did grow.
And it, yeah, it, well, it starts to bend over too and it's not going to have the, 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 the structure, the structural integrity of, you know, because we want it to stand up straight. Eventually, those fibers, not necessarily coming out more, but as they're breaking down, they're, they could be less structurally able to stand up straight.
So they're breaking down over time?
Well, and pla, and as you know, plastic has a very, very long life, so I wouldn't say that they're breaking down anytime soon.
Going somewhere. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I, I was going to ask if somebody from the advisory group would like to come and kind of give us your perspective on this whole process.
Take 30 seconds. Fabulous team, right here. And it was, there were staff and consultants who were wonderful to work with. You couldn't have gotten any of the three of us who are here tonight who are on that committee to do anything like this presentation. They, you can tell the knowledge that they gained, the amount of time that they put into this, understanding it. They practiced, the explaining they did with you tonight, they practiced with us at the committee, they were always continuously patient and a phenomenal team to work with. And so I would offer on behalf of the advisory group that's here, my thanks certainly to the group, but the staff was just outstanding.
Okay, well, I think that gives us all the information we're, we could imagine. I'm looking at the clock, it's nine, it's 9:05. We've been going since 6:30 with a short break. I think maybe a quick five-minute break for restrooms and so forth might be in order. Is that a good idea? Okay, let's take, we'll be back at 12 minutes after nine.
I'm quoting a December press release. 3M announced it will exit manufacturing PFAs and work to discontinue the use of PFAs across its product portfolio by the, by the end of 2025. 3M's decision is based on careful consideration and a thorough evaluation of the evolving external landscape, including multiple factors such as an accelerating regulatory trends focused on reducing or eliminating the presence of PFAs in the environment and changing stakeholder expectations. That was their quote. That means lawsuits. PFAs are considered the new asbestos. While Alderman have received information from the public, the Parks Board has not updated its presentation to include facts about the chemicals found in its recommended choice. Mostly, the problem has been glossed over or ignored as unimportant. While the advisory group has done an excellent job of designing the park, it was not tasked with addressing the underlying problem. The city council may want to perform its due diligence and research thoroughly plastic turf. If proceeding with the installation of plastic turf with its PFAs at the Deerpath Community Park, Alderman are knowingly voting to install 10 acres of a toxic substance that can harm our children. That will be your legacy. And almost assuredly down the road, the city will be subject to lawsuits by some of those residents who were exposed almost daily for four years while playing on those toxic fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, the next item on our agenda is opportunities for citizens to address the city council. So if there's anybody from the public, I've got a couple of people here who would like to address the council, please, please let city clerk Boyer know. And the first person I have here for public comment is Rami Lopat.
My name is Rami Lopat. Before I even begin, I, you may have noticed that I was a little unsteady on my feet walking over here and that is because I broke my hip a couple of weeks ago and, and I wanted to commend our fire department. When they picked me up off the ground, they were phenomenal. They calmed me down, they made eye contact, they knew how to lift me up. I can't say that about the hospital. And so, kudos to them. I have yet to sit down and write a letter and, and send something to our fire department, but they did a really great job. Before I even begin, I want to address the McKinley settlement PSA contract and I see it's in your omnibus agenda. Do you want me to address it now or would it?
Sure.
Would be likely to pull it out?
If that's what you wanted to talk about, yeah.
Okay.
Normally, we don't have public comment on, on omnibus items, but.
Okay. Well, when I read this one secret sales contract for the city-owned McKinley properties, I immediately thought, this is where the mess all began. And its language still illustrates why we have endured six years of problems. Case in point, page 38, you're page three there in the contract, section 7A. You're not looking. It says, quote, "The development will include not more than four buildings which will be in similar scale, materials and design to building one." Which interpreted to me means, did the HBC ever stand a chance of critiquing the scale, materials and design of the developer's proposed buildings? If this was the secret contract that the developer stuck in his vest pocket after it was negotiated by PPL members Reisenberg, Panaleon, Edelman, Kylie and Filippini and approved by the council, no questions asked, in May 2017, then I can well understand that the developer thought he had a done deal. He felt mighty secure. But the rest of us didn't know what the developer knew, that he could replicate his boxes and the city council already agreed to let him do so, regardless of our historic district. Indeed, this sales contract continues, this leading language on page four, in front of you tonight, it still says, "The city will diligently pursue," diligently pursue, "its review of the PUD application." Diligently? Let's just substitute the words quickly and eagerly. I hope you will not say yes to the same language tonight. Such partiality in our negotiations and contracts has got to stop. We need transparency and we need trust in the impartiality of our commissions and our staffs. Words like diligently have no place in our contracts. They, that word alone should give you pause in deciding how to vote. You received today from me, a list, I hope, really the same list as I presented on December 5th, of questions that still deserve answers. First, the discounted price of the property versus the payback time for that discount. You gave up $250,000, 50% of the original appraised value of $500,000 for a prime half acre in a historic district. County records show that the condo owners pay about $18,000 a year in property taxes to the city. Divide $250,000 by $18,000 and it will take 14 years to pay back that discounted price in the settlement. Add to that another 14 years to pay back the $250,000 for reimbursing the developer for putting utilities underground. Check my math, maybe I'm wrong, but I'd prefer that you had asked for the maths so that you could assure us that this funding decision was really the best deal our staff and attorneys could negotiate. Then there's the parking for the library. Poof, gone. What will the land be used for if not for library parking? Do you know? Did you tell us? The library board objected to this settlement. Have you sent the library board a written response and an offer that will appease them? The library board very likely would have been a beneficiary, a vested beneficiary of this contract and it spends significant, because it spent significant design fees on expansion plans with a changing property line showing eight new parking spaces and a reconfigured roadway. Will you reimburse the library for those design fees? At the very least, show the language deleting the parking for the library and strike it through. Show it in this contract. The loss of the third, the loss of the opportunity to provide an affordable housing unit in a high-end downtown condo, which our city code urges be provided on-site. You're letting it disappear for $72,000. Where'd that figure come from? Can another condo be secured? Near downtown transportation?
I'll up your comments, please, you're well over the three minutes.
Thank you. For just $72,000? Please let us know how that came to be. I understand the city is now trading one lawsuit for another. There's something wrong when there's two opposing lawsuits from the neighbors and from the developer. There's something in the process that needs investigation. I urge you to do that. There's no hurry on approving this contract tonight, except the developers hurry. So, slow it down, take a close look. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Carrie Johnson, Johnston?
Good evening, and it's Cory Johnston. I have one statement and that is, help me understand how you can approve a settlement when you have multiple lawsuits that are challenging the settlement and therefore cloud the title of the city-owned Westminster piece, pardon me, parcel.
Any other members of the public that would like to address the council? In that case, we will move on to the next item, which is items for omnibus vote consideration. We have 14, so bear with me, I get to read some more here. Number one, approval of December 5th, 2022 city council meeting minutes. Two, approval of the check register for the period of November 24th to December 31st, 2022. Third, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with holding a raffle in the city of Lake Forest for the Croya Foundation approval, I'm sorry, for the Croya Foundation, that's an approval by motion. Consideration, four, consideration of an ordinance amending the city of Lake Forest city code regarding the Class C1 and Class C3 licenses, first reading and if appropriate, final approval. Five, approval of a change order increasing the cost of printing and mailing the city dialogue newsletter for fiscal year 2022-23 from $41,980 to $45,071. Six, approval of, for the purchase of a Zoll X Series cardiac monitor and an extended warranty for a 2020 cardiac monitor in an amount not to exceed $53,392.23. Seventh, ratification of an emergency purchase of a police-marked vehicle approved by the city manager to Curry Ford of Valparaiso, Indiana in the amount of $44,975. Eighth, approval to purchase a rough mower for the golf course section to Rinders, Inc. in the amount of $80,361, included in the fiscal year 2024 capital equipment budget, and authorization to dispose of city property to the highest bidders for a total sum of $8,087. Ninth, approval to renew the agreement for enterprise resource management systems, software maintenance. Tenth, approval of the purchase of a replacement, of replacement computers for all city departments not to exceed the amount of $104,441. Eleventh, approval to waive city bid requirements and purchase audiovisual upgrades for city training and meeting rooms in an amount not to exceed $42,365 with modern media. Twelfth, consideration of the First Amendment to the Purchase, Sale and Development Agreement relating to Phase III of the McKinley Development. Thirteen, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the building review board, first reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. And fourteenth, consideration of ordinance, of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the zoning board of appeals, first reading and if desired by the city council, final Is there any item here that any member of the council would like removed or taken separately? Alderman Bushman.
Because of the underlying issues involving item 12, which is the amendments to the McKinley PSA, I'd like to have the vote separately taken on this item and therefore ask it to be removed from the omnibus agenda.
Alderman Prashlak.
I have a comment on item nine. Can I do that first?
Sure.
Anytime I get a chance to applaud our staff on our enterprise resource management system, I always like to take the opportunity to do that. So that's just to renew a maintenance contract, but when I first got on the council, it was a cap project and it was a big systems project and you guys have just done a phenomenal job on it. And it really, it doesn't get enough attention because, because these jobs are always over budget and they take too long and they were under budget and you guys delivered it. And it's a gift that's keep on giving. So Elizabeth, thank you. Thank you very much. I saw that, it just kind of warmed my heart because it's just, you know, there's always contention and issues that we kind of deal with here, but there's, but there's 99.9% good stuff and you guys are a huge part of it and so I just want to thank you on that one in particular, but there's a whole bunch of other things.
Thank you. Alderman Bushman.
Another thing, Mr. Mayor, as some of us are aware, some of the citizens have submitted suggestive changes to the draft minutes we have here. As again, item one, this is a meeting that occurred on December 5th relating to what they testified to or what they felt they testified to at the meeting. And I'm wondering if you can address some comments to whether it's needed or whether we can write on the record media.
Yeah, there's a, the minutes are not the end, the be-all, end-all. The minutes are designed to be an indication of, of the general proceedings. We have a video recording readily available on the city's website and on YouTube of the entire meeting, every single word spoken. And if anybody wanted to do a transcript, that would be the source, not the minutes. So there's really no reason to change the minutes for that purpose. It's, the record is actually the, the video recording, so. And I've actually consulted with the city attorney about that, so. And I've actually consulted with the city attorney about that, so, and the city clerk, so. So thank you, Ray, for bringing that up. Okay, I would, any other questions on any of the items? So I would entertain a motion to approve the omnibus items with the exception of Item number 12.
So move.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman notes.
Aye. Is I the right response?
Yes.
Aye.
Yep. Here.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarion?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Six yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Okay. And now I would entertain a motion to approve Item 12.
So move, second.
Roll call vote, please.
May I comment on the motion, please?
Why?
I'd like to make the comment, but I can do it where I have the vote in motion. Either way.
Say your piece. I mean, this is a, this is a matter of contractual obligation that we're talking about.
I recognize that, but I also believe that the terms that we would be approving here in amending PSA are unfair to the city's taxpayer, to our district, district concept, to our preservation heritage, to our affordable housing commitment, and also to the libraries that we cherish. That was commented earlier, and for that reason, I think the vote may be.
Thank you. Motion, please?
So move.
Oh, the, the motion's up.
Yes, I'm with you.
Okay. Second?
It was second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarion?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Nay.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman notes?
Aye.
Five yea, one nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is under Old Business. And there are a number of pieces to this. And in order to, in the interest of time, what I'd like to suggest is rather than having five separate votes, votes once Kathy makes her presentation, we have two votes. One to create an omnibus for all of these specific items. And then the second vote to just vote them through on an omnibus basis, just like we just did for the, for the. So just procedurally, I wanted everybody to understand how we're going to go about that. So Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for your perseverance through tonight. And, and thank you to those who are here in the audience for this, this project. I know it's late, I, I will be brief, but this is a project that's a long time coming. So I do want to just take a few minutes to, to really do some due diligence to this project. I want to do a very brief look back. Affordable housing in general, the existing five senior cottages. I want to talk about the new senior cottages. You've, you've heard about them before. I want to review the actions requested. Mr. Mayor, we have configured the action as you just described. And then I want to quickly talk about high level, some final steps to groundbreaking. Stepping back, affordable housing is something, if, if you go back in the minutes of, of the Plan Commission of the City Council in the 80s, it was acknowledged as important for the City of Lake Forest to maintain a diversity of housing stock. Historically, Lake Forest has had a diversity of housing stock. We've had the West Park neighborhood, the Codfish Alley neighborhood over, over on Maplewood, Washington Road, where many of the employees of the estates lived. So Lake Forest historically has always had a mix of a variety of housing types at a variety of price points. In the late, late 90s and early 2000s, again, the concern about the loss of affordable housing was raised because we were seeing a high number of demolition activity come forward. The city took various steps to address that. In 2001, retiring Alderman Tom Trop, I remember the evening, he, he stepped down from the dais and as the second meeting started, he stood at the podium and he talked about the senior cottage project that he had envisioned. And he envisioned it because he had been looking for a place for his father. So, former Alderman Trop formed a foundation. The five senior cottages were developed through a partnership that involved a, a number of players in the community, involved some, some of our local architects, some of our local engineers doing some work pro bono. As that project took shape, the city played a role in maintaining some of those units and selecting tenants. We brought in Presbyterian homes. But ultimately, we knew that, we came to learn that Community Partners for Affordable Housing was the expert in managing that kind of a project. We transferred those senior cottages to Community Partners for Affordable Housing. I'm going to talk, just mention a few things about those in a, in a moment. But I, I wanted to note the affordable housing approach that this city council in, I believe, 2003 agreed to through, or committed to through a resolution in support of affordable housing, really set out a plan to do affordable housing in a way that would work for Lake Forest and in a way that was compatible with the history and diversity of housing. A multi-pronged approach that involves scattered sites, that involves really incorporating affordable units into the community. And the, the city, since that time, has been very successful in doing that. We have acquired, in partnership with Community Partners, 10 single-family homes scattered throughout the neighborhood. Those homes are affordable in perpetuity because they're held in a land trust model. But those homes have been purchased by couples who grew up in Lake Forest and who wanted to move back, employees of the college, single parents who had students at the high school. So that aspect of the affordable housing goals to meet the needs of Lake Forest residents was achieved. We have, through our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, achieved 14 affordable units throughout the community as part of new development. So the, the approach developed in 2001, in '3, and then in 2005 memorialized in our Affordable Housing Plan, has been successful. And although it's not highly visible, Lake Forest really has made progress. The 10 independent living units, the 14 units that we've gotten through Inclusionary Housing Unit and our educational institutions together in our community, those institutions alone have over 60 affordable units that they make available to their faculty and staff. So Lake Forest is continually, continuing to make incremental progress, important progress consistent with that, those earlier goals. Why more senior cottages? Because the five that were built on Conway Road are successful. They're successful, they're financially sustainable, they're well managed, they're in demand. When people move in, they, in most cases, if not all cases, have lived out the rest of their life in those units. The units are located near stores and restaurants and a church and medical offices and banks and the train station. We have a waiting list. So why build more because of the success of these units? In, get my, lose my dates. In, in 2019, the city council, on the recommendation of the Housing Trust Fund Board, supported the addition of, of senior cottages in our community. We studied various sites. One site in particular, we actually moved pretty far along and there were some issues that prevented us from moving forward. In two, in 2021, we came back to the city council and we said, "How about the site on the northwest corner of Everett and Waukegan Road?" That site was acquired by the city in the 80s as part of the Tiff District. It has long been zoned commercial. Theoretically, the city could sell it and we could see another proposal for a gas station and a car wash or a multifamily development. In the recent review of the comprehensive plan for Waukegan Road Business District, that group leaned toward, and I think Alderman Weber, you were part of that. That group leaned toward redesignating that residential, but then at the last minute said, "Let's leave it open for commercial." So that site has the potential to be developed with something much more intense than senior cottages. The, the city owns the property that extends from Everett Road in this area, along Telegraph, both sides of Telegraph Road, all the way to Conway Road. What's proposed is a 2.3-acre site generally in this area. There used to be a structure there. We've used that site for some overflow BMW parking in the past. But the 2.3-acre site that the council in 2021 agreed through a motion to commit to this senior cottage use will be bordered both to the west and to the north by property that remains city-owned, providing in this area just over an 80-foot buffer between the senior cottage development itself and any adjacent neighbors. New senior cottages, in summary, 12 units and six duplex buildings. They'll be right-sized units. I believe they're a little bit smaller than the units on Conway Road. They're single-story. The, the site plan, which I'll review in a moment, has two access points moved as far as possible away from the intersection of Everett and Telegraph Road. The units will have an internal street and sidewalks and will have access to an existing pedestrian path that really creates a nice walking loop for those residents. This development will have proximity to the existing senior cottages. Both will be managed and owned by Community Partners for Affordable Housing, demonstrated success in attracting tenants, vetting tenants, meeting the tenants' needs and managing the overall site. And importantly, the last two points, the 12 senior cottages meet a demand. We know there is a demand. Our Senior Resources Commission regularly hears from people, as does the Lake Forest-Lake Bluff Senior Citizen Foundation. There is a waiting list for these types of units. And probably most importantly, why senior cottages? Why on this site? Why in Lake Forest? Because there is an opportunity for a partnership here that has very strong partners. The county, the state, locally, this project would not have moved forward without Steve Potsek, who is currently the president, I believe, of the Lake Forest-Lake Bluff Senior Citizen Foundation, Paul Lemieux, who I believe is the vice president of the foundation. Both have been advocating and pushing for these cottage, this cottage project for a long time. I'll also note that Community Partners is an invaluable partner in all of the city's affordable housing efforts. Chase Morris is here tonight, the vice president of Real Estate Development for Community Partners for Affordable Housing. Community Partners for Affordable Housing, CPAH, has been in, in-depth conversations with the state. Tax credits are, I don't want to say committed because I know we need your action first, but tax credits, state grants and county grants are all in place and will be authorized following up to council action. A quick review, again, Telegraph Road, Everett Road. This is the 2.3-acre site, kept tight to the senior cottages that has been identified as the transfer parcel. The site plan, again, six duplex units, 12, six duplex buildings, 12 units in total, intersection of Everett and Telegraph. We do know that at times there's congestion at that intersection. And to address that, the access to this private road that will circulate through this development has been pushed north and west as far as possible. We looked at a number of site plans, worked with public safety. The fire department felt that it was important to have two access points. We did consider a single access point in a loop. But in response to their request, the access point on Everett Road is a right-in, right-out. The benefit of the senior cottage use as opposed to a commercial use or a market-rate multifamily use is that, for the most part, seniors will likely be able to plan their trips and they will come to know when to stay away from that intersection. There's, there's likely more flexibility in when they need to go out. Let me back up one moment. The Plan Commission considered both the plot of consolidation, which was on the previous slide, and the site plan. There is a slight variance requested, so small that you probably can't see it. It's colored pink right in this area. The required setback is 20 feet. A portion of these two units will encroach into that setback at the greatest extent, less than five feet. So there is a sliver of the eastern portion of those units that will encroach. The Plan Commission did unanimously recommend approval of that variance. And the reason for that is to protect this path, which we heard is important and well-used, as well as some wetlands in this area. You do have a unanimous recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of this project. The Building Review Board also saw this project, looked at the design aspects. There are two types of cottages. Most of the units will have the front-facing garages and those will be on the outside of the internal road. And then a couple of the cottage, cottages will have side-load garages. The Building Review Board noted simple forms, strong proportions, quality materials, and also recommended unanimously support of this project. Council action. You do have five actions detailed in your, in your council agenda. We have conferred with both the mayor and the city attorney. And if you wish to take these, and you can't do it in a single vote, you still need two votes. But you could first approve a motion to consider these five actions as a single omnibus item. And if you unanimously approve that motion, then, Mr. Mayor, you could read these five actions and you could take one additional vote and move through it. I do want to take one more moment. We are at a point where this project can move forward very quickly. It, it's been complicated, there's a lot of pieces. So what happens to get us to groundbreaking? Community Partners for Affordable Housing will work to finalize all aspects of the project funding. The property will not transfer until all that funding is in, in hand, so to speak. We are working with the city attorney's office now to finalize the land donation agreement. And we'll be working with CPAH's attorneys. That land donation agreement will come back to the city council before the transfer of property actually occurs. Once the transfer of property occurs, the city council also, in 2021, stated support for a $350,000 contribution to this project, which the Lake Forest-Lake Bluff Senior Citizen Foundation is matching or exceeding. I think I've, I've heard that their number went up above ours to 450, I believe. We will finalize plans, those will come in for permits and we'll work closely with Community Partners for Affordable Housing to move this forward. I do want to note that, as with the earlier senior cottage projects, we do have some consultants, Black Engineering and Tim Archibald's architectural firm, who are working with us on that and both are providing part of their services pro bono. So again, this, this project, this development will be a, a true partnership and will result in 12 senior cottages that will be available to income-eligible residents with priority given to Lake Forest residents, former Lake Forest residents, parents of Lake Forest residents. Lake Bluff is also very interested in participating, so we will continue to work with them. I know that was very quick, but I would be happy to answer questions. I just want to be respectful of your time. Here's the suggested action, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Kathy?
I just have a comment. Going back to 2019 when this project first came forth, I was new to the council and was sitting on the PPL Committee in learning. And we also had discussions about the Everett Road-Waukegan Road intersection improvements, which sort of was on the fence of funding and details and scope. And I believe at that time I had voted no to this moving forward. But I want to just say as a fourth ward alderman, I'm thrilled to see this come forth and all of the partnerships that you've talked about, Kathy, and the work that's gone in. So really well done and it's an exciting piece to bring to our community.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions?
Awesome.
Yeah, this is a great, I mean, what a great, what a great success story and.
And again, I have to emphasize, it is because of those three P- And again, I have to emphasize, it is because of those three people there that this is before you tonight.
Well, I, I remember it was contemplated for the Grove campus
Right.
Until they figured out that the infrastructure wasn't really up to the job, and then was, where are we gonna, we, there's momentum behind this, we want to do this, where are we gonna put it? And actually, if it's not, if I remember correctly, I think Kathy Cerniak had a lot to do with pointing this site out as available.
Yes, she did. Yes, she did. I was on the Senior Citizens Committee at the time, and I remember the question come up, and they were very disappointed that that Grove campus wasn't going to work, and then I do remember your name being prominently mentioned for coming up with this site. So thank you for your work on this, Kathy.
Kathy, just out of curiosity, how long is the waitlist? Is it, is it, I mean, is this gonna take a lot of, a good chunk off the list?
Mr. Potsek, do you?
When I was the chair of the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff Senior Resources Commission, we put a lot of time and effort in trying to answer that question, and it's variable. We saw, over a few years, we saw 12 people and we saw 40 people. Now, that's a misnomer a little bit, because these people have applied but have not been vetted. You don't vet until you have a, a place available, right? And the other issue is, do you apply if there's nothing available? Well, no, you don't do that either. So talking to many people, and talking to our senior advocate, who touches base every day with seniors who need housing, every time we met, it was noted that the first priority for seniors in our community was affordable housing. So everybody I've talked to believes this will not be an issue. We will have more applications and more eligible people than, in fact, we have cottages.
That's great, thank you. That's great.
Okay.
You know, just a question occurs to me, I think you touched on Lake Bluff briefly, and, and the Senior Citizens Foundation, I believe, is Lake Forest and Lake Bluff. So how would they figure into this mix at some point?
I, I will say, both the senior commission is Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, and the foundation.
Foundation, right.
I can tell you that I talked to the village manager of Lake Bluff as recently as this afternoon. He said, "Interest continues to be high." I will circle back with him after this action, but Lake Bluff is actively talking about an affordable housing plan. So interest in high, and, and I believe there's
They're talking about, they're talking about contributing
And I would, yeah, I was just gonna note that we would expect a financial contribution.
Yes, and as I mentioned, the, the interest I expressed was not in affordable housing, in affordable housing, but specifically in this cottage project.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I do anticipate there will be
A financial contribution.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, if there are no further questions.
I move to approve the five action items as an omnibus vote.
Second.
Okay, all right. I guess that's a roll call? Oh, voice vote? Sorry?
That can be a voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, actually, before we do this, I'm gonna read the items, because we have to get that in the record. So the five items are, number one, by motion, accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission and approve the site plan and plat of consolidation. Two, if determined to be appropriate by the city council, accept, sorry, forget about that part, accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission, waive first reading and grant final approval of an ordinance approving a variance to allow one of the duplex buildings, two of the cottages, to encroach not more than five feet into the corner-side yard setback along Telegraph Road. Three, accept the recommendation of the building review board and waive first reading and grant final approval of an ordinance approving the design aspects of the senior cottage development. Four, accept the recommendation of the Property and Public Lands Committee and approve a resolution declaring the 2.23 acre parcel as reflected on the plat of consolidation to be surplus property, and directing that all necessary steps be taken to effect the transfer. And five, approve payment in the previously approved amount of $350,000 from the city's Housing Trust Fund to Community Partners for Affordable Housing to support the development of 12 senior cottages upon the completion of the transfer of the property. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the five action items.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, and this is a roll call vote.
Correct. Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Five yea, zero nay, I'm sorry, six yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We are going to go into executive session, but first, I wanted to check and see if there are any additional items for discussion or comments by council members.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I have one. Thank you, and thank you very much, everybody, for your time and patience. We saw a wonderful presentation earlier about our first responders, and, you know, we're really very fortunate to, to have city staff of the quality that we have. I think we're all very thankful that the men and women that are there for us always are. I wanna extend that one step further, and I'll, I'll give you a reference. On December 24th, we were in the throes of a pretty significant cold snap, and it was a lot of people, car batteries went dead, it was right before Christmas, day before Christmas Eve, and if there's a bad time to have it, that's it. But the one thing I noticed, it was on a Friday morning, I looked out my window, and there was our sanitation workers out there, and it was 10 below zero. And I picked up the phone and I called Director Thomas, and I, I asked him, I said, you know, are, are our guys sure they wanna be out there? And he told me that they wanted to be out there. They wanted to get out there and get ahead of everything for Christmas. And so, my hat's off to all the folks that are working there, and sanitation supervisor, Brian Bukochnick. You know, hopefully word gets through to him that, you know, we're deeply appreciative, not just of certain staff, but all staff, and it's kind of a thankless job to go around and do that, and when it's 10 below, it's, it's no more rewarding. But I just like to offer up a personal debt of gratitude to, to them and, and to all city staff. I think that really speaks to the quality of the people that work for us and with us, and I just wanna say thank you to them, so that's it.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. I'm gonna entertain a motion to go into executive session. For those of you who are in the audience, we're not gonna conduct any business after the executive session, so with all due respect, there's not much reason to stick around. Probably like to go home, and, and then we'll re, we will reconvene just to adjourn the meeting, so.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Need a roll call for executive session, okay?
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack. Alderman Gashkarian. Six yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Ted, I know when